Everyone, it is June 25th, 2020. Welcome to the Planning Board. I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Ms. Burbine.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein.
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard. Mr. Pritchard.
There you go.
Steve.
Ms. Lewis.
She said aye.
Aye.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, anyone wants audio participation? Dial any number, 425-436-6308. Or 425-436-6300. The access code is 538960. If you want video participation, HTTPS, slash slash join dot free conference call dot com slash situate one. Follow the instructions on your computer screen to join the meeting. Your computer microphone will be muted. You will be allowed to ask questions or comment during the moderated question and answer period following the audio, following the audio directions. Okay, we now have a continued public hearing. Stormwater Site Plan Administrative Review. Common driveway, 16, 18 to 20, Man Hill Road. Applicant owner, estate of Patsy Jo Terrell. All right, so. Mr. Tanzi, are you with us?
Ah, yes, I am. Well, we've gone back and forth a couple of times with Peter Palmary. And we have had a general card on their comments. And we have satisfied all the technical elements that, that Peter had made. And there are one or two things, one in particular, that's, that's basically the decision of the, of the Planning Board. What Pete, the, the, the one in particular is, is dealing with the, with the swale. I'm sorry, the, the stormwater management system. And he wanted this system to be put in an easement. But the, the stormwater management system really consists of very subtle grading in, in the rare yacht area. And some infiltrators, some subsurface infiltrators that have drains from low points in the lot directly into the chambers. So these chambers can be accessed pretty easily through that drain. So it also serves as an inspection port and also a port where if we fell into the chambers, it could be easily evacuated through pneumatic processes. And that can be done quickly and relatively inexpens, inexpensively. But what we're opposed to is just such a lengthy or a large easement in somebody's backyard. It, it precludes the owner from really utilizing the yacht area. And it devalues the lot, which is really not, not necessary. It's really not a good thing. It brings up questions such as, if you do have an easement, who do you grant it to? The only one who's really gonna be maintaining these systems is the homeowner. I mean, these residential stormwater control systems, what I tried to do is when I designed them, I tried to design them so that they're so integral with, you know, lawn areas or other landscaping features such that the homeowner will maintain these control water controls by virtue of maintaining their lawns and landscaping. You know, if, if you had a detention basin out back in the woods and it was out of sight and out of mind, the homeowner wouldn't maintain it. But if maintaining his lawn was part of the maintenance of these structures, then the structure gets maintained. And the homeowner will do that to make his yard beautiful, to make it usable and attract it. You know, we look at this as the same thing as, you know, a septic system. They have subsurface chambers and, and they're a lot more elaborate than what this stormwater management system is. And there's no need to put a septic system in an easement. So what we're asking the commission to do to, I'm sorry, the Planning Board to do to, as an alternative means of control, if something goes wrong. You know, we wanna put some mechanism that would be in the chain, in the deed and the chain of title that would, you know, allow the, the Planning Board or the town or the DPW to force them to take some action, to, you know, the homeowner to take some action to remedy what, you know, a situation should it go wrong. And we don't anticipate that really happening. We've had many of these systems in town and I don't know of any problems that have been had. So I mean, that's, that's really the, the major outstanding comment. And, and this is, it's, it's really, you know, it's up to the, it's a, it's a call for the Planning Board. You know, it's on the last page, comment three, you can, can, can read it. You know, we want to, someone with management and its related people on some odd teeth to be altered or approved by the, the board. And, you know, it'll be a condition of the board and we, you know, we record that language that says, you know, you're not gonna alter the, the yacht area in the area where the, you know, stormwater management system is. That, that's really the, that's really the only outstanding comment. There's third, might have been one other minor thing that Peter was leaving to the, you know, in the hands of the Planning Board.
Give it to the panel.
Yeah, he, he just had a comment that he had to add an extra detention basin in back of lot number one. And that, that was only because we needed to add that extra detention basin because we needed to get a foot of freeboard in these drainage structures. That was one of the comments that Peter had. And so we, we got to put a freeboard in, in, in all these structures in the hundred year storm. If there's any questions that the Planning Board might have, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, all right, thank you, Mr. Tanzi. Karen, do you wanna respond?
Um, Greg, I think you need to reference for the board that you, on the plan that I'm looking at, you have 16, 18, and 20 for the house numbers. Which one's lot one? Which one's lot three?
Okay, um, sixteen is lot three and, and the twenty is, is lot one. So I, I, you know, lot, lot, um, lot three, which would be number sixteen, which is,
Okay, that, that's.
The line off is down to the left, the farthest line off to the left as you look at the plan. In back of that lot, there's, we added a detention basin. And we needed to do that in order to provide a foot of freeboard in the other drainage areas.
What did, what did that serve?
Uh, the foot of freeboard?
The detention basin?
What the detention, what it does is it allows the performance standard of the stormwater bylaw to be met. You know, without it.
The water that goes into it?
The water that goes into that, mostly it's coming from offsite, up gradient. And there's a great up gradient area that's offsite that runs through the site and then discharges off the site to the north. So what we did is we captured it up high, we mitigated that stormwater and then we released it so that it would flow through the undisturbed buffer, much in the same fashion that it does now. But we were, we did mitigate, mitigate it. There'll be less flow going through that buffer and off the northern property line with these stormwater controls than there is now without them. So we, we met the performance standards of the bylaw. The last go around, we met the performance standards of the bylaw without the basin, but it caused the other basin to be almost full to the top without a foot of freeboard. And that was a request by Peter Palmary that we provide that one foot of freeboard in there. So we had to add that extra basin.
All right, so Greg, I think what you need to do is I think you need to give a very, very, very brief description of how this plan changed from the original plan. The only, this is only the second public hearing on this project and you've done a total redesign. And without having you on video, our audience participation doesn't understand what you've done.
Good. Very simply put, the, the changes that were made to this plan was the addition of the detention basin that's, you know, in back of lot three, that's house number twenty, sixteen. And we also added an easement off to the, on, on the northern property line for a drain line that's coming out of what's, what's called detention basin one. And, and we also did a little bit of regrading of that, that basin. We, we increased the size of the drain line coming out of that basin. We also adjusted some of the.
Can you point out where that is? I'm not following you. So where is detention basin one?
Detention basin one is right at the beginning of the common driveway, right near Man, Man Lot Road in. I mean, Man Hill Road.
It's north of the driveway then?
Yes, yes.
That basin right there, okay.
Right, right. And, and we also, Peter asked us to provide more cover over that pipe and we did and that, and he was satisfied that we had addressed that comment. We also put a shallow swale in front of the proposed dwelling eighteen. This is, that would be lot two, the middle lot. And again, that satisfied Peter. And. And we, we had to do some subtle regrading of, of the basin on the middle lot, that's number eighteen or lot two. And he was, he was happy with that because it gave us our, our freeboard, our one foot of freeboard that he was looking for.
You know, Peter, I need, excuse me, Greg, I need to have you explain to everyone what you mean by freeboard. What exactly do you mean by that?
A foot of freeboard in the hundred year storm means that the maximum height of the water in the basin is a foot below the very top rim of the basin. So between the top rim of the basin and a hundred year storm, the peak elevation of the water in that basin, there's a, there's a foot of vertical distance. And that one foot vertical distance is referred to as freeboard.
Okay. Karen?
Um, Greg, you're kinda missing what I'm really getting after. You, you've, you've taken out that you're not having soil amendments and you've created a buffer in the back and you have a one-to-one riprap slope along the whole back of lot, lot two and lot one. So that's kinda what I was looking for you to let the public know, that you created, you have a vegetated buffer now, that this is not going, this is not gonna be clear cut.
Yeah, yes, I, I, I'm sorry, I, I thought that was understood. But yeah, we're, we're not extending any grading out to the rare property lines of, on those, on lots three and lot two. I'm sorry, lot two and lot one, but lot, lot three, there will be a detention basin there, but everything else is, is gonna be remain undisturbed. That, that vegetated wood line is gonna remain the same. There are a few lodge trees near the rare property line of the site that several of the butters wanted to remain and keep. And, and we are gonna keep those trees, the lodge trees that look nice. And any other tree that's between the, the slope riprap wall and the stone wall property line, that, that area is gonna remain undisturbed. And that's, in the area in back of.
Excuse me, Mr. Tanzi.
Lot one.
Mr. Tanzi, hold on one second, Greg.
Lot two, number eighteen.
Greg, I just want the public to know that the plan is up on video.
Right.
They wanna take a look at it. There it is. If they can figure it out. So lot number three is the furthest one to the.
It's not showing in on the video.
It isn't, all right.
No.
Okay.
I'll see it anyway.
Video on SCTV.
It's the video on SCTV. You have to turn on your telly to watch this one.
All right. All right, well, sorry, we, we're trying to so that everyone could understand what's going, what's going on. I guess I want to know why you can't do an easement and why we have, I, I think at the last meeting, Ben had suggested that some creative landscaping and landscape features would be, would make, be an asset to these properties. And I, I guess I'd like you to tell the board why a one-to-one riprap slope in the middle of a backyard is an asset.
Why, what's in, in the middle of the backyard is an asset? I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
Your one-to-one riprap slope. That runs along the back.
Yeah, what, what, what that is, is it's a stabilized slope. And we're grading it off at a three-to-one slope. One-to-one slope will give you a, a, a larger buffer area in the backyard. And, and that, that's what the intent there was. And it also helps to raise the grade in, in back of the lawns. And that not only helps with stormwater, but I think it looks better from the, you know, looking through the buffer. Because as you, as you raise things up, the shrubs and, and the growth that grows in that buffer, it, it filters out, you know, it, it provides a better screen. And that buffer, it'll fill in with some nice low lying vegetation. And, and they always do, once, once you let some sunlight into them, which inherently will happen, you'll get some nice understory filling in there. Right now, that buffer doesn't really have a lot of understory in it, but, but it will. It'll naturalize, it'll get more sun in there, and I think it'll be a better buffer than what's out there now in due season.
All right, well, I. I'm, I'm, I would recommend to the board that they strongly consider an easement because that's what you've required on all the other projects that you, that come before you. And then my only other question has to do with the, can you explain how these driveways are gonna have sightline visibility?
Yeah, that was, that was a comment that Peter suggested that, you know, when, you know, if, if the project is approved and we go out there, to take a look and see if any vegetation that's growing up near the edge of the road needs to be removed just to maintain a sightline. And, you know, we thought that was a good idea and we agreed, you know, with this. I don't really anticipate that there'd be any real problem, just given the fact that it is, you know, the, the location of the pavement is a lot of, right away area between the lot line and the pavement. So if we did have to remove some vegetation, we'll be able to do that just to make a, a clear sightline. I, I don't anticipate there'd be an issue with that.
Excuse me, Sherri, did somebody just get.
Is there a homeowner's agreement with this? Maintenance plan and all that?
There's an O and M plan.
Maintenance plan.
There's no homeowner's agreement, there's an O and M plan.
There's an O and M plan, yeah.
Is it, are the lot owners obligated to follow?
Yes, they'll be obligated to, to follow the O and M plan.
Here we go.
It can be, you know, if you want it to be on there, that, you know, just make it a condition and it'll be, it will be on there. That's what I anticipate was gonna happen.
I guess what I'm saying is that if we, if we need to ensure that vegetation is clear to ensure sightlines, then we probably ought to show that and make that part of the homeowner's obligation to maintain those sightlines too.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Sherri.
Absolutely, we should. I mean, I think we should be showing some of it on the plan. We have, we have.
That's what I'm saying, is that.
Agreed.
We oughta have something shown up on this plan that shows the area for clearing to ensure sightline, right?
Yes, I, I agree with you, Steve.
What's, can I ask, Karen, if you have other questions, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Steve. Now, those were my, I mean, I just wanted people to understand this is a total redesign and I wanted, I, I think there should be an easement. Go ahead.
I, I tend to agree with that as well. The, there's, there's something shown in the back of, this looks like dwelling number eighteen, that looks like an underground infiltration basin of some kind? And it has a surface drain, a four-inch surface drain that, I guess I'm trying to understand how this functions. Is it intended that the water, the runoff is going into the surface drain? Or what, what is that?
Yeah.
What is the lawn drain for?
Okay, the lawn, what the lawn drain does, let me just briefly explain the system. There is a very shallow hole in the backyard. It's a long rectangular skinny hole and it's, it's part of the lawn. It'll look like lawn area, unless you really know what you're looking at. You know, the intent is when somebody's out there, it just looks like, you know, part of the lawn area that undulates. And, and what happens is runoff, a deepness.
A deepness, less than a foot?
It's a little over a foot.
Uh huh, okay.
And.
And then when it settles up and it goes down the drain?
Correct. And there, there are subsurface recharge chambers underneath it. And those, that lawn, it, it's also gonna serve as an inspection port. And if, you know, if it needed to be cleaned, if debris got in there, again, it, it can be extracted through pneumatic means pretty easily.
And it's, it's got, it's four inches in diameter? And it's got a cover on top of it of some kind?
Well, it, it has a grate. It, it's, and it's not a solid tub. It allows water to pass through into the chamber below.
And also why. To me like that, that has the potential, it's not if it gets debris, it's when it gets debris, right? So it has the potential to clog up, particularly for inch drain, pretty quickly. And the, the, the alternative to that is it spills over its banks, right?
Well, there's a lot of infiltration that's going on in the bottom of it and a lot of, a lot of water will get into these chain subsurface chambers via infiltration. But in my experience, well, that, yeah, I mean, they're, they're gonna be submerged, they're gonna be under a, under a head. I mean, if you. I mean, if you wanted them to be made into a six-inch, you know, diameter grate or whatever, I'm not opposed to it, but my experience is that these things have worked quite well. And I haven't had really any complaints about their functionality.
Is, is Peter on the line? Do we have our...
No, Peter's not on the line, because we didn't have enough, we didn't have enough peer review money.
Okay. Did, did he opine on this at all?
He opined that basically that the design was okay. He, you know, he had questioned about the, about easements and the site distance. You're looking for the lawn drain?
I'm just saying that looks like the point of luggage and, and, you know, the stormwater system ends up going a different direction altogether.
If, if it's a concern, I mean, we could add a few more of the inspection ports in lawn drain, that maybe we could, we could put two more in and double it if, if that makes you feel comfortable with the system.
Well, I guess I was looking for, and maybe just because Peter's not on the line, we don't have our expert on the line either, I just, I don't know enough about these systems, and it just strikes me as, you know, a system that's intended to handle a hundred-year storm with one four-inch strain that, you know, if it's in the fall, it's going to be plugged with leaves, you know? It just feels like it's a problem waiting to happen. But if, if Peter's, you know, if our guy's comfortable with it, and it's comfortable with its performance, then I guess that's it. I, I guess I would be more comfortable having more inlets to it as opposed to fewer, but it seems to me like a four-inch strain isn't much.
You know, I'll, I'll add two more. I mean, I'm gonna, I have to edit the plan anyway to, to show the, the letter declaring that, that you want, you know, for the site distances, and I just add, I'll add two more of it, that, you know, if you're more comfortable with that, that's, that's fine by us.
And Steve, we can go back and ask Peter Palmieri, you know, about that, and we can...
Why don't we do that, Karen? Because I don't, I don't want to be arbitrary here, but it just, just from a practical level, it strikes me as that's going to be the point of, of, you know, kind of failure, if you will.
All right, so Greg, you'll have to ask your client to send us some additional money for peer review.
Ben, do you have any comments?
Is there, is there a amount that you're, you're looking for?
I'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
Ben?
Shouldn't be that, that much work. It's, it's really more about the performance of a system like this, and, and we just like the, I guess I'd like to hear from the expert on this one.
Thank you, Steve. Ben?
Sure, I, I just have a couple of questions on stormwater. First of all, in, in my experience, we've, this board has had a lot of issues brought before it about whether real or perceived, issues with stormwater or water entering other abutting properties from new developments that have had approved stormwater plans. I'm just wondering, I guess from a design perspective, when I look at this plan, I notice that the vast majority of kind of the BMPs and stormwater infrastructure is pushed towards the far periphery of the property, like towards the property line. And I'm just curious from a design perspective, why that is, and why perhaps we couldn't have more decentralized stormwater management systems away from abutting properties? And then also, what assurance can you provide that we will not have any sort of stormwater issues to abutters, whether it's through the, some aspect of the system itself, or through a potential groundwater breakout after infiltration?
Okay, well, first, I would, I would classify this as a decentralized stormwater system. We've got a basin out front, we've got a basin, although it's in the backyard of one of the lots, it's not right at the rear yard property, and that's the biggest one. We did have one that's tucked away in the southeast corner of the site, but even that basin is handling runoff from outside, you know, from off-site. And it, it's going to mitigate it, and it's going to discharge it down the under-stirved buffer strip, and you can see the contours, they're all graded, you know, going right down to the north, and for the most part, those contours are perpendicular with the property line, which means the water's going to sheet flow to the north. It's not going to be going to the, to the abutters on the, to, to the east, they're rear yard areas. And that, that is a drainage pattern that has been maintained, a pre-developed drainage pattern. Again, it serves to mitigate before it, it leaves the, the site. It'll provide a lot of sheet flow through that buffer strip. You know, the understory, again, the vegetative cover, that's probably, that's going to, I anticipate it's going to thicken, it's going to thicken and thicken. And that's going to have a lot of uptake, and it'll, it'll retard the discharge going to the north. So there's, there's a lot of good things, a lot of positive things happening there with, with this system. And that's going to, not only will that help mitigate surface discharges, but it'll, it'll also help to absorb some of the groundwater that, that occurs. And that's just a naturally occurring situation, the groundwater in these soils, it's a tilt. They're typically about 37 inches down, 35 inches down. It's just, you know, you know, in this area, we had some at 44, we had models at 49, in 37 inches. I mean, that, that's just, it is what it is. That's, that's the, the typical tilt. The numbers are what, what they are. You know, the, these stormwater controls have mitigated peak flow rate and volumes. And, you know, if a, if a butter is, you know, is going to make claims about runoff, I mean, it's not uncommon that they do, but the numbers are the numbers. And, you know, there's nothing I can do other than meet the performance standards of the bylaw. And of course, this bylaw is a very thorough bylaw, the performance standards of it are much higher than what many other towns require. And, you know, the only thing we can do is to meet the, the performance standards. And I think, given what we've got here, and, you know, a decentralized system, we've got permeable pavement, which is an excellent BMP, not, not only from a treatment standpoint, but it doesn't produce runoff, and it does provide a, a very good decentralized way of recharging stormwater runoff throughout the site. And, you know, I think, I think we probably, you know, have the best system here as far as BMPs with stormwater basins.
On that, on that topic, I have another question on the basins. Are, are these proposed to just be, like, seeded with some sort of turf grass and mowed? Is that the general design from a landscaping perspective? Well, just...
The seed, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go, go ahead. No, no, it's okay, you can answer that part of the question first.
Yeah, what I anticipate, this, the turf being in these basins, is your basic lawn seed mix, your, you know, your rides, your blues, your, your esculs. And it'll be, you know, the intent is that these basins would be mowed with a lawn mower, and it would look like part of the lot.
Okay, so...
That's really what the intent is.
Sure, so my follow-up to that is, given the abutters' concerns regarding particularly the design of this development and the kind of vegetative clearing that's going on, I would pose the question, why not design the basins more as bioretention facilities that can be planted with vegeta, with vegetation to provide more screening to abutting properties as well as mitigate the impacts of habitat loss and environmental service loss from the clearing? I just would ask that you consider potentially the idea of planted bioretention cells rather than necessarily mowed grass basins?
Well, it's all clean runoff that's going into them. You know, bioretention cells are things that are usually used to incorporate treatment of stormwater. They're usually intended to treat stormwater that's been contaminated by, you know, roadway surfaces, that, that type of thing. And these structures are, are just receiving rooftop runoff, which is clean.
But, so, sorry...
Which is also clean. So it's, it's really not necessary, it's not, you know, it's not, it's not really adding any additional protection from stormwater.
No, my, my comment, my comment wasn't regarding stormwater. My comment was about screening to abut, abutting properties and mitigating the habitat loss of vegetative clearing and the reduction of environmental and ecological, ecosystem services from clearing. It was not in regards to stormwater. But that, I, as long as, but you're not telling me that a bioretention cell, it's, it is a suitable BMP for, for that, or are you telling me otherwise?
Well...
Would it not be acceptable to infiltrate stormwater from roofs?
Would it not be acceptable? No, it, it is, it's, that's fine. And that's what, that's ultimately what's going to happen, is where, you know, these, these systems do have a large amount of recharge capabilities, and that's, you know, part of its functionality. And there's, there's nothing wrong with recharging rooftop runoff, and, and that's what, that's what we're doing here.
He doesn't get it.
Mr. Tansey, hang on a second. Greg, time out, time. I don't think, I don't think that you fully understand what Ben is trying to say. That I, Ben, would, do you want to elaborate?
Well, my, my comment is just that, it's my opinion, and I think it would be beneficial for the abutters, given the comments we've received, if some sort of landscape plan that involved plantings was involved with these basins, rather than just having kind of a boring depression that's mowed and serves no purpose. So, augmenting the screening, mitigating the, the impacts of the clearing and the lot development, that, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is that you can, through some sort of planting plan, is establish some positive benefits, rather than just having, that would be better than just the grassed basin. But I, I understand we might agree to disagree, but that's my opinion, the, the point that I was trying to make.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
How, how is the, so where is the rooftop runoff going to? And how is it getting to these, to the basins?
Well, all, all discharges from the tributary areas, like getting into this, the basin on, you know, lot two, the middle lot, it's, it's all getting in there by overland flow, sheet flow. You know, as far as the basins being, you know, boring, they're, they're not boring, they're, they're usable lawn, lawn areas, and they will look very nice, the homeowner will appreciate it. I mean, most likely, there'll be some kids, you know, a family of, you know, two or three or whatever, and they'll have an area for the kids to play soccer and, you know, whatever.
Okay, I think we're, I think we're probably going to continue...
I favor vegetation. I, I favor vegetation, and I hear what you're, you're talking, where you're coming from, and it's a valid point. But we've also provided, you know, a lot more vegetation that's in a natural form with a buffer, where, as you know, the first time around, we had, we didn't have a buffer. We had lawn area right up to the, the, the back of the lots where the stone wall was, and it wasn't looked favorably by the board, so we redesigned the whole system all over and to provide that, that vegetated screen. So we do have plenty of vegetated buffer, and we also have a nice lawn area for the, for the project, and as, and it doubles as a, as a very effective and appropriate stormwater control.
All right, thank you. Ben, one?
One more question.
Yeah.
This is a change of topic, but it's still on stormwater. So for the, for the permeable pavement, based off of the, the plan detail, you're proposing porous asphalt, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And could you just tell us a little bit about the operation and maintenance plan, and how, how the infiltration capacity of the porous asphalt is to be maintained?
Okay, the porous asphalt will be maintained much like a regular pavement. You gotta shovel it, you gotta plow it, and it's, it's a very durable pavement. It does not need the salt that a standard pavement does, and it doesn't need the sanding that a standard pavement does. People, you can put these treatments on the surface, but you'd, you'd do well to, to put it in the lesser quantities, and there's two reasons for that. One, the porous pavement is a much, it's a coarser surface pavement. It's not like your standard pavement that's smooth, it's not like your standard pavement that tends to become slick when, when there's snow on the, on the surface of it. And these pavements, what's nice about them is water and slush, it doesn't just sit on the pavement, it, it infiltrates through the pavement and is disposed of. And for that reason, it requires less sanding and salting, and that's a good thing, that's a good environmental thing, it's a good thing from a maintenance standpoint... It's a good thing from a maintenance standpoint. The treatment that you get from a porous pavement is excellent. Before it recharges into the ground, the DEP credits this BMP as something that will give an 80% TSS removal rate. That's the highest pretreatment BMP other than a proprietary structure. And even some proprietary structures can't even meet those numbers as well. They can come pretty close, typically they'll be in the 77% range, whereas the pavement, the porous pavement is up at 80. And that's something that I think is overlooked. I don't think this BMP practice is used as much as it really should be used in design.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Greg. I need to move on. Patty, do you have any comments?
I only have one. This is a riff from both Mr. Pritchett and Mr. Bornstein. When you put in these kind of convoluted stormwater systems, it forces homeowners to become stormwater engineers. I happen to live in a place where I have to control all this. You have no idea how hard this is for the average person to kind of comprehend. Where do you go for somebody to go and look at it? How do you maintain this stuff? So, there's a lot of problems that I have with these convoluted sheet-y systems or whatnot. And I also agree with Ben that this is a board that does not really like clear cutting, as you know. I think that we should try to keep it as natural as possible and I can always see a four-inch pipe in the backyard, it's an accident waiting to happen. That's it.
All right, thank you. Rebecca?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, because I appear to be fairly frozen. Okay, I have a question in regards to the buffer zone. You indicated that there were certain trees that the neighbors were going to, that wanted, neighbors wanted you to keep. Are they in the buffer zone?
They are just inside the buffer zone. They're right along the property line. Right here, right here, the stone wall.
If that's a buffer zone, are you clearing it other than those trees or is it just going to be remain as it is?
It's gonna remain as it is, at least behind Lots 3 and Lots 2.
I think we should get some dimensions on that and make sure that it's pretty well squared away is what remain, because it's gotta be marked when you go out there to do any work.
Right.
So, we don't want to leave it to sort of happenstance, because it'll all get cleared and then put it back's a lot harder.
That's true.
We could stake it out in the field is probably a really good way to...
We want dimensions, Greg. That's what we need, our dimensions. All right, I am going to reserve my comments until after we have the Q and A, so if you want, public wants to weigh in on this, just identify yourself and the, and where you live, please. Thank you.
Q and A session has started.
All right, any public comment?
Q and A session is over.
That was me, it was me.
Q and A session has started.
Okay, ready?
Ready.
Press star six one, they go to this panel.
All right, do we have anyone?
We do.
Please identify yourself. Did you unmute them?
They're supposed to, tell them to hit star six one.
Hit star six one.
On their phone.
On your phone.
Unmute themselves. It's supposed to unmute them when I click on them.
No one?
No, we have people.
I know we have people, but we can't hear them. Yes, Mrs. Wasserman, I see you waving.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
You can hear me, okay. I am Shari Wasserman. My husband Alan is here. We abut to the south. So, I have a couple of questions. Do you want me to just ask them all and then they can all be answered together? Would that be more efficient than going back and forth?
Yes.
Okay, so my first question is, there is a pipe infiltration trench on the border of Lot number three on our property. I wanted to know how close that is to the property line? Where does it drain off? Does it go from front to back? And is it supposed to be draining into that new created basin number three? My second question was, how close the house is, the edge of the house, to the property line? And the comment was that newly created detention basin behind Lot number three, it seems like what we're doing is we're giving up woods for a mosquito lake. And, okay, number four is, why does it appear that the leaching area for the septic system behind property number three is so much smaller than the ones that are in front of houses number one and two? And my last comment is that I agree that an easement put on a deed will do a better job of requiring homeowners to do maintenance on their properties than if it is not done as an easement. And that's it, I'm done.
Thank you. All right, Greg, would you care to respond?
Sure. The first question is, what we've got along the property line is an infiltration trench and what the intent of that is, is not really taking runoff from the site. It will receive a little bit of runoff from a grading slope, but what it mainly will do is take water that's flowing north from the Wasserman property and it'll infiltrate it and send it into the basin that's in the back, right up in the north, the newly, this is detention basin three, the new one. And what that'll start to do is it'll prevent potting at the property line. That was the intent. We didn't want our site to improve the flow of water and cause a, you know, some standing water to occur there. So, that will take any runoff flowing to the north from the Wasserman property and bring it into the basement and then the basin will treat it and send it off down through the buffer strip.
From the property line, I'm sorry?
Yes, but it's running parallel with your property line, ma'am.
Right along it, you could have a tree really close to there that we're afraid that it would disrupt the roots of that large maple tree.
Is it on your property, ma'am?
Yes. The maple tree is on our property. I'm just worried about digging it, my husband agrees that it's a very good idea to have that infiltration trench there. My concern is that in digging it to put that trench there, whether or not that might potentially hurt a tree that's right at the border of the property and cause that tree to fall into our yard and our own septic system. Just what was my question about how far from the property line that pipe actually is? Is it right on the property line?
It's about two or three feet off of it. But, it's only about 18 inches down. We don't want to cut roots of the tree. You know, if we had to, if we had to, like a straight feed down to the pipe around a root ball, you know, we could do that to prevent cutting the roots.
All right, you know what? We need to move on. She asked a question, why the septic system behind Lot 3, House 3, was smaller than the others? And your response to that is?
Yeah, the response to that is, the septic system on Lot 3 is greatly smaller than the other two septic systems and that is because we had much better torque rates on Lot 3 than we did on Lots 2 and Lot 1.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's...
The other question was how far off the line was the house and the property line set back in that area is about 15 feet. So, it's probably about 16 feet off the line, if I remember correctly. I don't, on this plan, I don't have a dimension to that line, but this is, I will do the scale.
Okay.
Just scale down below, you can scale it up.
All right, so...
Okay, it's close to 20.
There is scale? No, right here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
All right, anyone else?
Next question.
Hello?
This is the Kishatsky.
Can you hear us?
Go ahead and ask the question.
What is your question? Do you have a question? Who is it?
Mr. Kishatsky.
The other neighbor, okay.
Hello?
I have another caller.
All right, the next caller.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello?
Hello.
Okay, great, thank you, I'm sorry. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you are, please.
Oh, thank you so much. This is President Todd Kishatsky at 30 Man Hill.
All right, you're...
And we had a couple of questions. One, you know, I do want to, you know, say I appreciate all the comments that we've heard regarding vegetation and that there is now a buffer zone, but I, we've noted that it really is only across the back line. There really is not much across our property there as far as saving any of the trees or the vegetation as far as we could tell.
Where is your property, please?
We are at 30 Man Hill.
I don't know where that is.
To the north of the, to the north.
It's the north border. It's, I think, what it'd be, the border is 2020.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So, I'm just, we wanted to know if we were reading this correctly and if there was any way some of the vegetation could be saved there. And then we also noted in the, in the response report that was online under additional comments, there was something that referred to a swell running along the property line, an easement for the property, you know, for us, you know. So, I wanted to learn more about what that meant for us and how that might change the look there up to the rock wall.
Yeah, that was a comment that was made by the town consultant and a swale is a little, it's a shallow ditch. It'll be loamed and seeded. It's on, it'll be located just on the other side of the rock wall and any runoff coming off that grading will be captured by the swale and it's a shallow, golly, it's like a shallow ditch. And it will run along the property line, so off to the back and then there's a shallow plunge pool. We've got some protection with a level spreader and then it'll sheet flow off, you know, it's natural pattern, up to the north. And it was put in an easement. There's a couple, there's another question that the consultant had in that area that he wanted the grid to have a little bit more cover, which meant bury it a little bit deeper and we did. So, we satisfied his comments and those comments were directed with your property in mind. He might have had a little extra protection there. So, we gave him, you know, we provided that protection in response to his comments.
And how does that affect the rock wall and the property line? It shouldn't or...
No, it's not, it's not gonna disturb the wall.
The wall remains. The wall remains, okay? All right, anything else?
And then the other question was about, you know, the buffer vegetation. It looks like that, you know, was taken into consideration and mainly for the property along the back. And I do think an easement, you know, does, you know, kind of have some teeth in it, but was there, is there any vegetation that's gonna be saved on any other part of the property? In particular, abutting our property?
No, the grading goes right up to the stone wall. So, that vegetation, I don't think there was a whole lot of vegetation back there, but in that...
Well, there's a lot. You can come over and check out, I'll take it all.
Yeah.
There's a lot of trees back there, there's a lot.
Yeah, but no, we're not gonna be able to save any of that vegetation back there.
All right, there's, there's, there's a pretty, pretty large tree, so that's why we were wondering and, yeah, they're quite, quite large. And the barn? The barn?
Yeah, the barn, there's a couple of things that can happen with the barn and it would be, it's dependent upon the, you know, the property owner. They can, they can remove it or they can leave it or they can relocate it to a different area on the site. But, that would be up to...
Stormwater design based on?
Well, the stormwater design was based on where it's currently at right now.
The stain is...
Well, it could be moved to the back and...
I'm just asking the question, what was the stormwater design based on? It was based on the barn stain in place?
It was based on its current location. That's what it did, that's what it was. But, if it were to be relocated to the rear, it wouldn't affect the cow. As long as the barn stays...
All right.
As long as the barn stays in the same watershed, it would, you know, it wouldn't really affect the cows. But, if it gets relocated, it's an easy enough cow to have Peter verify.
All right, thank you. We have another question?
Hi, this is Marla Enrich Minier, 29, Christopher Lane. My questions really refer to what happens when the property is developed and you are no longer around? What, who is really responsible for cleaning out the drainage and what happens if they don't maintain it?
Good question. Good question.
Well, the, to answer that question, the homeowner is responsible. If they don't, if they don't maintain it, they're gonna, it's gonna impact them. If they don't, if they don't maintain it, it's, it's gonna be unsightly and, you know, they're gonna have to live with, uh, any inconveniences associated with, with the lack of maintenance. But, um, the maintenance of these, these control systems that is, is very much integral with the maintenance of, of, of the yacht area. And most homeowners will not let the yacht areas fall into disarray. They will, they will have their landscaper, or, you know, they'll, they'll manicure the lawn and keep it in good shape. They'll do the fertilizing. And as long as they, uh, you know, keep it in good shape and not let, um, excessive amounts of leaves settle in it for prolonged periods of time, um, it, these things, uh, have a good track record of, of longevity and, and effective functionality.
Well, you know what? I have to tell you, um, Mr. Tansy, that I don't necessarily agree with you. I know of a swale over on, not Christopher Lane, but the next one down. Nope. And they put in a garden on the swale. These things are almost impossible to keep track of. And yes, it might be unsightly to the people who own this particular property, but it's also very unsightly to the neighbors. And I think that that is the whole point of all of this. Human nature being what it is, it's in the back of the property, out of sight, out of mind. And so they have no idea what to do, depending upon their landscaper, who may or may not dump all of the grass into the swale. So, Marla, do you have any more questions?
Yes, um, and this has to do with, again, the future. Um, so you said that in the buffer strip, you anticipate a lot of understory growth, which is certainly wonderful, but what would prevent the homeowner from clearing it? And secondly, your driveway material sounds wonderful, but what would prevent a future homeowner from replacing it with typical asphalt?
Well, I've never had that happen. Uh, you know, there's no, uh, this, the pavement that we put down, it, it's a long-lasting pavement. It, it's very durable. It's good for 30 years or, or more. Um, there's not, there's not any real practical reason why the homeowner would want to, to replace it. Um, it, it would be very, very difficult. Plus, there's only, uh, there's only two, really two driveways. There's one common driveway. To replace that asphalt, you know, indiscriminately, it's gonna be, you know, impacting the other neighbor and, and both neighbors would have to be in agreement to do this. And, and both of them would have to be in agreement to basically violate their permit.
Okay, and so how about the buffer strip?
I'm sorry?
What, what would prevent the homeowner from clearing the buffer strip? Not clearing the trees, but clearing the understory, which sounds really appealing when you describe it. And I would love the understory to grow, but, but what if the homeowner cleared it? What happens then?
Marla, excuse me, one of the things that we will do, if, Mr. Tansy, excuse me.
They, they don't have any real effective use for-
Mr. Tansy, would you, Mr. Tansy, would you stop for one moment? Mr. Tansy? Mr. Tansy?
My bad, Brian, it'd be just as much as you like yours.
All right, Mr. Tansy, enough. As far as we are concerned with this buffer strip, we will put a condition on this special permit that if someone comes in and touches it, they will have to replicate it and/or they will be fined, which is what we did on the last special permit that we had. So we are doing whatever we can to ensure that everything remains as it is on the plan, that there will be repercussions if people choose to not do what they are supposed to do. Does that satisfy you, Mrs. Minier?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Burbine.
All right. Okay. We're gonna end the Q and A. Thank you very much.
Q and A session is over.
My comment on all of this is, I really feel, and it's just me, it's too much on too small a space. Three big houses, two acres of land, everything is being smushed in, and I frankly, you know, it might meet the conditions and all the rest of it, but I have a real problem. That said, um, I think under the circumstances, this needs to be continued. And we, there are issues here that need to be answered concerning drainage, concerning swales, concerning all of it. Karen?
Um, I think that, um, we'll have to get a continuance. We'll have to get more money from the applicant. And I also think that we also need to talk about in the next session of the public hearing, how this is gonna be constructed? Because we do not want the detention basin areas used as sedimentation sumps during construction.
Yep.
So I think we, um, we're proposing a continuance to August 13th.
Karen, I also, um, add one more thing to the list is I would, we may have it and I may not have just seen it yet, but if we have the O and M plan-
Yep, I can get you the, I can get you the O and M plan and I can also get you, uh, I did send it out, but we also have a SWIP plan too, and that has a very detailed phasing of construction activity that I wanna make sure is gonna be followed.
Yep.
Okay.
I just wanna understand what the O and M plan is, is really requiring the homeowners.
I'll get it to, I'll get it to everybody.
Thank you. All right, Patty?
I'm, I'm going to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the stormwater permit and common driveway site plan administrative review for 16, 18, and 20 Man Hill Road until August 13th, 2020 at 7:00 PM, and to continue the trial for action filing with the town clerk until September 30th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Anyone, can you just remind anyone that's leaving the meeting? Leave the meeting, do not hit end of the meeting?
Yes, if you're leaving the meeting, please do not hit end.
Please hit leave.
Please hit leave. Thank you. All right. Our next item is an informal discussion with the Gulf Station canopy. Do we have, um, Mr. Harrison? All right.
Hello?
Hello, Sean.
Hi, hello?
Hello.
Ian, it's, Ian, um, and everyone, I, it's Sean, Sean Harrison, Phil James. Wish you had my office phone, if that's okay, if you wanna speak to phone.
That's fine. Why don't you tell us what you plan to do?
I'll let Phil stop the discussion, Phil James. Okay, uh, Gulf Oil Company proposed putting in a canopy just over the pump. It, we have a cement pad. I, I don't have any of the dimensions down, but, uh, it will not go attached to the building and it will probably be anyways between five and maybe eight feet away from the edge of the road or the, the walkway that people use along Front Street on. The canopy mainly is for the employees so they don't get so wet in the rain and the snow and stuff like that.
Will it have fire protection?
Uh, this won't, you don't, uh, you don't have to have it because it's a full serve. If it's self-serve, you have to have the, uh, fire suppressor.
Okay, um, Karen?
Um, well, we took, we had took the, Anne and myself took the opportunity this afternoon when we were, um, had, had a couple other questions and projects to talk about with the building department. So we met with, uh, Bob Vogel and Neil Duggan. And, um, we were reminded that this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot and so that, um, I think that your first round of, um, seeking approval for this is gonna have to be the ZBA.
Did you catch that?
Why?
Because apparently all, um, there's been special permits issued on this property.
It was a pre-existing non-conforming use is what they told us. And so adding a canopy is adding something to this pre-existing non-conforming use. So they suggested that you are gonna wanna talk to the building department because you'll probably need to go to the ZBA.
This, this use, this part of this use has not changed in 70 years.
It had, you're adding a structure.
What was, what, what was changed with the ZBA a few years ago was the operational fact, this has been a full-service gas station since the 50s.
I, I understand that-
I dropped off some hotness entrance. It's only gonna be-
You're kinda breaking up a little, Sean, I, I can't hear you.
Um, I hope, I'll try to speak a little louder. You know, I dropped off some hotness entrance. This is only gonna be an improvement to the looks of the property and provide some protection to the employees. I, I just think it's, it's gonna be much more appealing, that, that, that thought.
I, I understand that, but when we were meeting with the building department about a number of addition, different issues, and I brought this up, that you were coming to discuss this, and they said that this was a, this is a non-conforming, um, use, um, that existed, you know, for a long time, but thus it, it had some type of ZBA, um, approval probably. And you're adding something to an already non-conforming use, so therefore you have to go to the ZBA.
Are they adding something that, um, makes it more non-conforming, or is this-
Yes.
The non-conformant's something different?
It's a business in a residential zone.
And they're adding a structure, which is a canopy?
Yeah, but it, it, that's a non, I'm, I'm trying to understand what the non-con-
No, it's-
A business in a residential yow, zone, it doesn't change. It's still a business in a residential zone, so that would increase that non-conformant, right? So I guess the question is, what is the, what is the non-conformant that the canopy would be changing?
The canopy is a structure. So the, the structure would be closer to the roadway. I, I'm just telling you what the building, what they said.
It's an offset from the road? It's, it's a frontage issue?
No.
There's, there's lights over the island anyways, and that's where the lights are gonna be, kept in the canopy. There are posts that hold these lights now. They're just gonna put a roof over this, that's all.
Well, I suggest then-
I'm just trying to understand what the non, what the increase in non-conformant could be.
It's not gonna be anywhere the size of the canopy on the gas station in the harbor, nowhere close to that. But the same idea, it's not gonna be attached to the building and it's gonna be a setback from the street. It's just a vision.
Yeah, I get that, Sean. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm really just asking Karen, when they talk to the building department, um, what, because if, if what you're asking is, if you have to go back to the ZBA to ask them for a variance of some kind for an increase in non-conforming use, I'm just trying to understand what the non-conforming, uh, component, uh, that he would be requesting, right? I, I don't understand it, that's all.
I, I'm not 100% sure, Steve. Uh, the, the first thing that came out of their mouth is, when we talked about it, is that they need to go to the ZBA. So I would suggest that, Sean, you have a conversation with, um, Bob and Neil and lay out exactly what you wanna do and let them decide.
Okay.
All right.
I mean, we had this meeting late this afternoon, um, so it was, you know, I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to call you before the meeting, but, um, that, that's what they said. So I'm just being the messenger.
All right, okay.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on. 8:30, well, we're only five minutes late. Uh, we have reorganization of the board and signatures. Okay, Patty?
I nominate Anne Burbine, um, for chair, and I also nominate Ben Bornstein as vice chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So, Ms. Born, Ms. Bornstein? Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to nominate Patty to continue, no, yes, okay. As clerk.
Second.
Ms. Bornstein?
Aye.
Hi, mom.
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
She's not here. Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have, we have two signatures, but we can do-
We'll do, I'll have, I have to, uh, we'll have to get to-
All right. Um, we have to do planning board liaison list. And I will, Bill did traffic rules and regulations and I would like, if nobody minds, I would like to pick that up.
Yours.
Oh, thanks. I want, okay, I wanna get rid of economic development. Is there anybody out there that wants it?
No.
Don't everyone speak at once?
Sure.
All right, you'll take economic development?
Sure.
Good. Um, who wants to do street acceptance? Bill had that.
I'll, I'll do that.
All right, Patty? And... Does anybody wanna do social coalition?
What is?
Which way I am?
What it is, it's, um, made up of 11 towns. It's part of the metropolitan area, uh, planning. I was on it for over 20 years and Brad was doing it, and as we know, he went south.
And I started, the COVID came in.
And COVID came, and so, you know, let's hold that one in abeyance. We'll figure that one out later. Um, okay, let's see.
And disabilities?
And who wants to do disabilities?
I'll do it, but when is it?
I'm not sure when they really meet and how often they really meet. I mean, it says, I know that, um, they have met before on Thursday nights, maybe that's, um, but I can try to find out.
Okay. And shellfish?
I know nothing about-
I just stepped down, I can't, I'm not allowed to do it.
Would you say then?
Oh, I, I just, I can't do it. Um, it's a conflict, so I'm not allowed to do it.
Okay, all right. Every other Wednesday? Um, I can do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I can do it.
All we can do is the best we can, that's all. Um, you know what I find interesting about zoning board of appeals? It meets every third Thursday, and isn't that when we meet?
No, we meet second and fourth.
Okay, great, all right. So Patty, you and I are doing that one.
Yep, if they ever meet again.
Yeah. And we don't have anybody for recreation at the moment.
But they're, they're, they're mediated complex.
Yep.
Steve, do you wanna stay on advisory? Steve, do you want to stay on advisory?
Sure.
Is there any, and let's see, what else is there? Anything else? Who, what about public buildings?
Okay, no one's on there, huh?
No one's on that one.
I can do that.
All right, Patty?
Do they actually really meet?
Yes, they do.
Steve, would you like that one? You don't have to if you don't want to. Are you thinking?
Okay, Ben?
Yes?
So I've been there with a little confusion over, do you go to Water Resource Committee?
I do.
Which is different than the waterways.
So I'm supposed to be going to Waterways Commission. You don't go to that one, right?
I do not.
Okay.
And you go to the Housing Trust, Rebecca, right? The Affordable Housing Trust?
Yes.
You go to the Affordable Housing Trust?
Housing Trust I go to. But I, I, I went to a couple waterways, and then I thought Ben was going to them, but I didn't, I guess I didn't realize there's two different things.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll be back at Waterways now.
And are you going to stay with Housing Trust?
Yeah, Housing Trust I go to.
Okay.
Good, and Mr. Pritchard want to pick anything else up or no?
Do you want public buildings, Steve? Say yes.
No.
Oh, okay. Patty, you can do it. All right, well, I guess that's about it. Oh, okay, we have one more item that we have to do here.
I move to declare the alternate planning board member position vacant, and to request the Board of Selectment and the Planning Board jointly appoint a new alternate Planning Board member and prepare to post the position in Citrus Mariner and post on the town's website and the social media platforms through the months of July and August.
Is there, all those in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we have approved minutes.
Uh, hold on. I move to approve the meeting minutes for June 11, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Liaison, accounting, please.
I move to approve the requisition of $112.50 to Merrill Corporation for the peer review of 16, 18 through 20 Manhill Road, Stormwater Spa Common Driveway, for $360 to Merrill Corporation for peer review of the stormwater at 273 First Parish Road, for $1,142.50 to Harriman Associated for consulting services on the master plan, and for $197.50 to Chesapeake Consulting Services LLC for peer review of the residential compound on Country Way.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, liaison reports. I'm not sure that there really is much of anything because it's of COVID. Anybody?
Nope.
Nope.
Yeah.
All right, planning and development report, Karen?
So town meeting is this Saturday at 9:00 at the new athletic field. Hopefully, it's just going to be pretty much budgets and consent agenda and postponement agenda. We're going to be having a number of special permits in July and August that we'll be hearing. I've been telling each applicant that we will not be entertaining any type of decision on the first public hearings of any of these, any of these hearings. We remain busy. Toll Brothers remains under construction. Currys Estates remains under construction, and we had a conference call with Drew today, and they hope to be commencing construction in the fall.
Anything else?
That's kind of the, pretty much the short and sweet of it.
Right, and we are incredibly busy.
This is a story on the water study. Haven't heard a thing about it.
I don't know, I can try to find out. I thought it was done.
Well, I haven't seen anything, so.
Okay. Well, 17A has also started too. We'll, I'll be going out there for a second pre-con next week. I will look into the water study and see if I can't get you something, Steve.
Well, I think it's not just me, I think it's everybody, right?
Right.
It's analysis on long-term water, assessment of one, long-term water capacity and how we integrate, how we do that analysis as part of new development, and we're, we're getting there, right? New development, so.
We are getting new development, and we're.
I'm pretty hot to it, right?
I will, I will find out, we're getting new development, and we're getting, I forwarded you a couple emails this week about complaints about water and development.
Right.
That we've been receiving. I forwarded those on to the town administrator as well.
And I, I think people need to understand that as far as water is concerned, the issue rests with the water commissioners, who are in point of fact the Board of Selectment. We're not the water commissioners.
I disagree with that, that's not the case, right? We're making decisions on long-term development and planning.
That's true, Steve, but.
It's our responsibility as well.
It al, yes, you are correct. However, it ultimately rests with the water commissioners. We can make recommendations, but it lies with them.
I respectfully disagree.
All right, then we.
Also make decisions based on whether we believe that anybody's addressed the water issue or not.
I, I agree, but do we turn people down due to water or water restrictions when, I'm not sure how we do that? Do we deny a plan or a subdivision? We send out all of these plans to the different departments, and we never get a response?
Well, do we continue to drive the train right off the cliff?
I would hope not.
Be responsible for planning, right, so.
Yes, but do we deny someone based on, they have, the town has yet to tell us that we can't approve, we can't deny something because we have no water?
I think if we're looking.
I'm just saying, we, we were pretty clear about what we were looking for, right? And nobody in over a year has addressed it, and I'm still waiting for somebody to address it. It was supposed to have been addressed in the water study. And, you know, people, even, even in the briefings on the water study, you know, people sort of, you know, made short shrift of the notion that, well, you know, we might, we have plenty of water, right? We're not going to have all these, these issues. And what happened this last week, right?
Yep.
A well went down, right?
Right.
We're, we're in dire straits, right? And I think that's exactly what we were talking about, right? And so, yes, I, I'm still looking for a methodology that we can apply across all of the developments, right, that is consistent and will allow us to address whether we have the capacity or not, as opposed to continue to driving the car right off the cliff.
Yeah, to second your point, Steve, I, I agree. I, I kind of feel like with the driving off a cliff analogy, I do feel like we, right now, this has been a concern of the townspeople for, for years now, but I think right now, starting so early in the season, we're really, in my opinion, at a tipping point. Things started to boil over a little bit last year with the, the citizens petition at town meeting and whatnot, but um, I can say that now we're really starting, in my opinion, to see an impact on the everyday citizen's quality of life in, in the activities that are now restricted on their own property. I can also vouch from an economic development perspective, as an owner of a business that does landscaping and horticultural services, we are adversely impacted working in the town of Situate due to projects that have had to be postponed or indefinitely, sometimes canceled because we can't do installs anymore, even at this point in the season. We're barely into summer, I mean, spring just ended last week. And I think that it's, it's time to really get serious about the direction we're going for, for the people of the town, because I don't think that in, allowing further and further development to occur at the expense of the taxpaying citizens that are already here, people that run businesses here is, is the way to go. I think that's the car going over the cliff.
Well, isn't the master plan supposed to be helping us determine what strategies we need to adopt in order to control development? I mean, really, if we're going to talk about strategies for development, then we need to be probably talking, nobody wants to hear this, about increasing lot sizes.
Yeah, I.
I'm more worried about the long-term availability of the water supply system. You know, every time we connect another straw to it, we make it harder and harder, right?
I, I think.
And we still don't know what the answer to that question is. And we were supposed to get at least some kind of science-based methodology to evaluate this, and I haven't seen that yet. And, you know, the next guy who comes in with a development, I'm going to ask the same question. What's the, do we have the capacity? And, and the answer is not, oh, we can build a pipe large enough, it's whether we have the actual capacity in the ground with all the other uses in the town, right? And that's the piece that we've been sorely missing here.
Then do you think that it would be well worth our while to invite the water department and the head of DPW to come in and discuss this with us at an upcoming meeting?
Yeah, I would, I would like the results of the study. They completed it, and I'd like to read it, and then I would like to invite them in.
All right.
Okay, I will.
We'll get you a copy of it.
I will work on trying to get an answer on that.
Problem is.
It's just not, it's just not for me, I'm.
No.
We know that, Steve, we know that.
Too.
We know that.
But we can't seem to extract the information that we want.
Right.
And that's the problem.
Well, I mean, look what we went through on, on Chief Justice Cushing. We did not get any support from anybody in terms of the town as far as the water was concerned. I mean.
I agree. And, you know, at some point, I think we're going to be at a point where we're just going to have to draw the line.
Yep.
And say, until we get these answers, you know, we're not prepared to, to agree that the capacity exists for development.
We'll have a problem with that.
All right.
You know, we can't keep promising people something that we have no idea if we can deliver on, none. And that's why people keep blaming us for the lack of water.
Well, I think we have a planning responsibility, you know, we can't, we obviously can't control the water department, but we can look at this in a systematic way and have a, have a methodology and procedure that hopefully reflects the reality and can help us make a decision one way or the other.
That's, that's a point well taken, Steve.
And this could be a wildly uneducated guess, but I'm going to assume they don't have one.
And I think you could be right.
They're waiting a year, and there's nothing coming forward.
Okay.
Well, they had promised it in the study, so I'm, I'm looking for the results of that.
And we had.
You said they, who are you talking about, Steve? Who's they?
The water department.
Right, and Ty and, Ty and Bond.
And Ty and Bond did the study, that was part of the scope of the study, I know because I spent a lot of time trying to make sure that was in the scope of the study. And we had two separate meetings where we reinforced that twice, that we were still looking for that. And, you know, granted, the COVID thing has come up, and there's, there's been some issues, but I think the, the last true conversation about this was back in, I don't know, October?
Yes, it was last fall.
August. It's way back.
All right. We will follow up and follow through. Is there anything else? All right, who wants to be the new person to entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you, people. We'll see you at town meeting.